Good evening. It's Tuesday, April 22nd of 2025. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Okay, Abel.
Here.
Nino.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Wozniak Scanlon.
Here.
Sherlucky.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Killison.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Okay, we have 11 Alders present.
All right, thank you. And we are in certified of compliance with open meeting laws. And I don't have anybody signed up for a public comment tonight. So we'll go right to communications and presentations. I have one communication. I'll just let the council know that Director Weiss and I met with Nels at Yehara Bay Distillery today. We had a tour. It was pretty awesome. His plan is to come to the city council, probably be the second meeting in May and kind of give an update of what his plan would be. And then the other communications since Director Abear is here is he's doing some investigating on Powerhouse and what we might do to alleviate some of the issues. I don't know if you want to just give a quick.
Yeah, sure. So next week I'm going to meet with a historical firm that works with, you know, older buildings and restoration. Right now it's just to triage the building and really to prevent any further damage to the building caused by water leakage. So we are going to attempt to shore up the northeast corner of the building because right now there's a gap in the roof. And so we want to shore that up and capture the water before it further deteriorates that northeast corner on the foundation side. So I'll meet them Wednesday. Hopefully we can get a plan together and get that taken care of. And then obviously create some plans with you guys on what we do with that building going forward. But right now it's just to prevent any further deterioration of the building until we figure out long term what we want to do with it.
All right, thank you. Are there any communications from Alders? Okay, we'll have an introduction of the historical fact of Stoughton.
All right, these are some more things, city happenings, all in April again. In 1900, there were bids for a new city hall to be built. They were sought, rejected, and then they were rebid. Within June, they were accepted the bid for $23,000. So relevance to, they were doing things then and we're going to see that coming up where we're going to have rejections of bids and acceptings of bids and all that sort of thing. So we're doing the same thing 125 years later. 1903, the old city hall was sold for $2,000. $2,000. Yep. In 1905, the council voted for a new power plant. In 1906, the council approved the purchase of the land on the corner where the library currently stands. It was purchased for the library. There was also in that year, an ordinance was put in place to prohibit spitting on sidewalks and in public buildings. It may still be on the books. We don't know. In 1911, there was an ordinance limiting the automobile speed limit within the city limits to 12 miles per hour. Good luck on getting that one back. In 1925, there was a prohibition put in place for slot machines in the city. So 1925, also there was a permit for a service station to be at Page and Main Street. So that's been for 100 years, there's been a gas station on that corner, some, one of the corners. One interesting bit, at least from my standpoint, was in 1930 and 1932, there was a supervisor that was elected within the city here who was HF Schumacher. So close to what my original last name was. But between 1930 and 1932, he changed the spelling of his name. So based on world events at that time, it was kind of an interesting piece as far as what was happening to immigrants that were in the area and the fears that they were having about world events. That's all that I have.
All right, thank you. We do have. Thank you for that. We do have items in the packet for information only. And I think the city attorney is going to do a presentation probably in May on kind of open meeting laws and things like that. So if you get bored tonight after the meeting, you can read through that information and then write down all your questions for the city attorney. But thank you for passing that on so we can include that into the packet. The first action item tonight is our consent agenda. And there's a number of items in the consent agenda. And we put them in there to create efficiencies in the meeting so we can vote on them as a block to try to keep the meeting moving along a little more efficiently. So I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the items in the consent agenda. Motion by Jensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Schumacher. Would anybody like anything in the consent agenda acted on separately?
Can I make an amendment? I think for, unless I missed it, the confirmation of mayor or citizen appointments for non-standing boards, committee, or commissions. I think Brett is moving over to the Sustainability Committee and that's not reflected.
I had always been on that one.
Oh, you have?
And I think it was in the original one. So I was taking, or I was going to do the utilities as an additional committee. But because we worked that out. So I think this sets the record straight.
All right, thanks.
All right. Any other questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, we have a couple ordinances for second readings. So these were introduced at the last meeting and now we're looking to potentially take action on them. The first one, ordinance 14, is coming from Public Safety Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 14 of 2025 to amend section 70-176, parking prohibited at all times. And I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wozniak Scanlon, Alder Person Jensen. Did you want to?
Explanation?
Sure.
Yeah, this is East Street on the east side of town. It's a dead end, one block long. It's basically no wider than an alley. It is virtually impossible for any EMS or fire or anything to turn around in there. So the most logical thing to do is to block parking on both sides. Everybody has adequate, as far as we could tell, everybody has adequate off-street parking. So for the sake of public safety, our first responders, police, so on. It was the best thing to do as far as the Public Safety Committee was concerned.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. The next one came out of the Community Affairs Council Policy, also known as CACP. And this one is updating language as it relates to the Committee of the Whole. And then, let's see. Can you introduce this one? Thank you.
So this is ordinance 15 of 2025, amending section 268 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the Committee of the Whole. This is the second reading and what the CACP did was go through and update it with, to make it a little bit more clear and concise about the purpose and makeup of the Committee of the Whole and make it a little less vague.
You want to move?
I will so move to approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wozniak Scanlon. Okay. And then I think there was a question for the city attorney on, oh, where was that? Trying to remember. Oh, when it said the motion requires no record. Do you remember that?
Yeah, that's in the current ordinance language. It's hard to, I guess, understand what was intended by the original ordinance. We could modify that so it is no second. But I think that's what the intent was, but I've never heard of a second referred to as like no record.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the reports rules.
Yeah.
So I guess that would be up to the council if you want to leave it or if you want to amend it and just change that wordage. But I know that was a question that came up.
I'd like to add the clarity in that. Just if we ask the question now, then if we look at it again, we're going to ask the question again. So we may as well clear the language up.
Okay. Are you offering to do that through an amendment? Not to put you on the spot or anything.
Yeah, I think if you wanted to amend it, it would just be, so we have a motion to approve right now. We could amend it to modify no record to state no second. And if that passes, we would update the ordinance to reflect that language.
Then I'll offer the motion for the amendment to change the wording from no record to no second.
Second.
All right, so there's a second on the motion. Second to second. Are there any discussion on that amendment? So it's only just to change that small part. Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, that takes us back to the motion as amended. Any discussion on that? Alder Person Nino.
No discussion, but I think there might be a typo that in the second paragraph, prior to AN-COW meeting or C-O-W, maybe that should be A instead of AN.
Okay, all right. Did you catch that one, Candy?
I got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for catching that. Anything else? All right, hearing none. All in favor, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next ordinance is a first reading and this one here is coming from the Plan Commission. So I'm looking at Alder Person Caravelo.
Thank you. Yes, this is first reading of ordinance 16 of 2025. This is amending section 30-5, parentheses B, of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the flood storage map panel numbers as required by the DNR.
Okay, and then anything you want to describe on that? And I'm sorry that, I don't know if Director Munz Pritchard's on here. She wasn't feeling well today.
I can cover for her.
Okay, thank you.
This is, we were notified by the DNR that this is sort of like a statewide thing where they're just making communities update their floodplain zoning maps. So this was suggested to be updated from the DNR. And we do, like, there is funding associated with having an updated floodplain ordinance. So it's good to make sure it's updated in that our maps are in line with state and federal requirements.
All right, are there any questions on that?
I just want, it looks like in here from the information, this is something we've been doing based on original wetland inventory map stuff from 1989. So we're just most current update based on, where's the date for this? Something just happened in April, based on information from like April 9th of 2025, so.
Yeah, I know there was a lot of emails going back and forth with the DNR and Director Munz Pritchard because I was CC'd on him and I think that there was a question about the map and some of the language. But I think we pretty much have it cleared up. But if you have any other questions for Chris, hopefully she'll be at the next meeting when we're taking action on it. Any questions tonight? Okay, we'll move on to the next one then. And that would be Resolution 52 of 2025. And this one and the next few are coming from the Finance Committee, which would be Alder Person Butler.
Okay, this is Resolution R 52, 2025, to amend the 2025 CIP budgets for the Lincoln, Marie, Wilson, Kensington Square and Sidewalk Program projects and enter into agreement with Wolf Paving Company Incorporated. And I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Butler.
All right, and this is a, this is a bid from Wolf Paving for a large construction project. And I am going to defer to Director Abear.
Yeah, so thank you. So this is part of our contract 1, 2025. So this was a bid that we let, or put out about a month ago for Lincoln from Highway B to Creedeman and then Wilson from Van Buren to Lincoln. And then also our sidewalk program from various different locations in the city. There are sort of legacy issues with some of our sidewalks. And then Kensington Square concrete. And so this was within our opinion of probable cost from our engineers. And we have worked with Wolf Paving in the past and our engineers also recommend approval of the contract. It's under budget. On the spreadsheet that you have in your packet, essentially the budget for this was under to the tune of $215,021.84. And we'd recommend approval on this, this project. Any questions?
All right, hearing no questions. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is R 53.
All right, this is R 53 of 2025, amend the 2025 CIP budgets for the Van Buren, Eisenhower, and Roosevelt projects and enter into agreement with Speedway Sand and Gravel Incorporated. And I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Schumacher. Go ahead, Alder Person Butler.
And I'll defer to Director Abear.
Yeah, thanks again. So this is Contract 2, 2025. This was bid out about two weeks ago. This one's for Van Buren from Robey to Creedeman and then Eisenhower from Van Buren to Lincoln and Roosevelt from Van Buren to Riverview. This one changed from basically a pulverization project to a full reconstruction project. During the design of the roadway, we recognized that the base material underneath the curb and gutter was inadequate and basically the curb and gutter were tipping backwards, exposing a lip. So at that point, we recognized that we need to move to a full reconstruction. And during that time, we talked with the Public Works Committee in January and we designed it to do essentially a road diet. So bringing in the curb and gutter six feet, using, you know, less asphalt, less impervious area, which creates larger terraces for larger terrace trees, more snow storage. It still allows for parking on both sides of the street. And so we feel like that's a good approach, basically building a new base in this roadway. What that does do though is obviously increases the budget. So what we're recommending is to forego the Phase 2 portion of Van Buren, which was from Creedeman to Greg Trail, and move that to the 2026 CIP or go through the budget process this year into 2026 through 2030. And then also take the surplus from Contract 1, 2025 that we talked about in the previous resolution and use those funds for this project. Also in your packet where it says other funding options besides Contract 1, 2025, using the surplus from Kensington Square and then also Jefferson Street Parking Lot. We're looking to move that into 2026 to align with a Sixth Street project that we'd like to do with TIF 8, correct? And so using those funds, we can get to basically zero and fund the project. And then also use some of those funds for other projects that we anticipate being short, which is the Senior Center Parking Lot. Any questions on that?
Any opposed to the motion? None opposed, the motion carries. All right, next item is the Senior Center Roof. Alder Person Butler.
And as Alder Schumacher referred to earlier, this one is a little different. This is R 54 of 2025, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to reject bids for the Senior Center Roof replacement. And I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wozniak Scanlon.
Director Abear.
Unfortunately, we went out for bid on this one. So we're looking at replacing the Cedar Shake Roof at the Senior Center with a metal Cedar Shake mimic roof. The opinion of probable cost on this roof is $277,000. And the bid that we got for this project was, I forget, $335,000, I think it was, which is well over our budget and over the opinion of probable cost. So we'd recommend that you reject this bid and allow us to go back out for bid this year. So we'd basically go back out for bid in the next couple of weeks.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
100 years from now, no one will talk about this bid rejection.
Who knows, maybe.
Hopefully the roof will still be on there.
Yeah.
Hopefully not this roof, the one that's being replaced.
Exactly. Yeah, the roof is going to stay there, exactly.
Alder Person Jensen. Turn on your mic there.
The roof material that we're going to be using again?
It's a metal roof.
Oh, you're going to metal.
Yeah, we talked about this at council and through the CIP process and that was the flavor of the council.
That was my thought. I remember it was staying there, but I wasn't sure. I wanted to just double check on it.
Yeah, it's metal that looks like shake.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Just out of curiosity to catch up, what is the life of that material?
Yeah, a metal roof, looking at 40 to 50 years, you know, and it does have ratings for, like, we had hail this past week. So it does have ratings for certain diameter of hail and there's warranties that come along with that. Of course, as the life of the roof progresses, the warranties become less and less. So we're looking at 40 to 50 years. That's about what we got with the Cedar Shake as well.
Yeah, and I think it's also, at least with my metal roof, it's kind of shake look. It goes up to, I can't remember, the wind velocity too. So I mean, that's just the hail that we get all the time and the amount of wind that we're getting. I just think it's a wise move to go to metal. But do you know what the rating is?
I have it in the packet. We talked about it at Public Works night. Don't quote me on this, but I think it was like 80 plus. When it comes to like warranties, like they'd warranty up to like 80 miles per hour. But I think it can last, you know, 110, somewhere in there. We do have spec'd in there, a little bit better rough material because of those types of things. We don't want to be replacing it. Also, within the bid packet is to accommodate for solar, which we're looking at putting on the Senior Center this year as well.
All right, follow up?
Sure.
Brett, do you have any idea what, if we went away from the texture, basically steel, just to a standing turn, you know?
Yeah.
Plate, cost difference?
Yeah, so we did do a bid alternate for asphalt, just to kind of see, we're looking at saving about $50,000.
But you're looking at not the?
Oh, standing seam.
Yeah, standing seam.
Oh, we didn't do that because we felt we talked through this to exhaustion. And if you'd like us to do a bid alternate for standing seam.
I'd be outruled on that one.
All right. So I will add that we did have two bids. The second bidder did not turn in their bid bond and so we disqualified their bid. So, you know, the second bid could have came in more favorable, but we were not able to accept the bid. So when we go back out for bid, if you guys approve, then we will remind prospective bidders that they must fill out everything within the bid packet, including the bid bonds.
Can you explain what a bid bond is?
Yeah, so basically this protects us. They have to use a bonding company and they pay an surety into the bond company. And then if they walk away from the project, the bid bond company would basically pay for the remainder of the project to finish it out. It protects us from them just walking away and saying, I don't think I want to do this anymore. This is too much for me or whatever. So that's why we need to protect ourselves through a bid bond.
All right, anything else for our roof expert?
Becoming one, I guess.
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. R 55 is regarding vested sick leave payout. Alder Person Butler.
This is R 55 of 2025 to amend city policy regarding funding for vested sick leave payouts. And I saw a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nino. Alder Person Butler.
And I can't remember if this came to council. I know it came to finance previously. I will defer to, I can't remember if it's Assistant or Deputy Director Hall, Assistant Director Hall.
So we had brought this resolution to Finance Committee shortly after Dave left. Before he left, he wrote a memo about where our unassigned fund balance was at. Before the end of 2024, we were just below target at 24.1%. And our target's to stay above 25%. So one of the methods that Director Ellinger had recommended was that we take a look at our vested sick leave balance, which was currently at 100% of vested sick leave. What that means is that we take the amount of sick leave the city employees have, which is about $1.2 million across the various employees, and assign that in the fund balance to say that should everybody all retire or need a payout in a certain year, we have the funds set aside to do so. When we made that resolution back in 2023, the fund balance was at over 50%. And so after that, it dropped it to about 40%. So we're still in a great financial condition. Now with the uses of unassigned fund balance, we're no longer in a place where we can afford that luxury. So what this resolution recommends is that we take the vested sick leave from 100% in assigned fund balance to 50%. And then that will shift about $613,000 from assigned fund balance to unassigned fund balance. And then brings that percentage of expenditures from 24% up to 29%. So now we'd be above our target for unassigned fund balance. That was a lot of stuff. I hope you followed along. Let me know if there's any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Hirsch.
Yeah, so if we take that out of our employee fund balance and put it in, what is it, more like the general fund or unassigned? Is that, if, God forbid, that everybody needs to take their sick leave payouts this year, do we have enough to cover all that? We're only at 50%, right?
No, so what the vested sick leave means, what we currently were banking was 100% of sick leave, meaning that almost all the sick leave hours that employees had earned, we were putting aside dollars for that amount. In the typical year, we have a handful of retirements. So even though we were setting aside 100% of money, even for employees who are not eligible for retirement yet, that money had been set aside. So by doing this, dropping it to the 50%, we're still covering our likely retirements through the liability, but freeing up funds to move it to the unassigned fund balance. So even at 50%, we more than cover what our anticipated liability for payouts would be.
And there's benefits to doing that.
So the reason why we want to take this action now is that since we did drop below our target, one of the things Moody looks for in our rating call when we go up to our debt issue is where the fund balance is at. And so since we dropped below our target and we're now recommending to take this action, that would bring us back above that fund balance target. And so we want to do that at this point.
So that would increase potentially our Moody rating.
It wouldn't necessarily increase our rating, but it helps us from having It wouldn't necessarily increase our rating, but it helps us from having an unfavorable opinion.
Yeah, we're hoping that we can increase it. The utilities were upgraded, so that's encouraging, but there's no guarantee we will be, and we haven't, I don't know if we've set a date for that yet.
We haven't set a date, but a lot of the factors that drop our rating from, we currently are AA2, we want to be AA3, are outside of our control because there's state funding kind of restrictions, or what our average income for the citizens in our area are. Those are things that the city itself doesn't necessarily have an influence over.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. The next one is R 56 from Finance. Are you guys like the only committee that met?
Yeah, get used to my beautiful voice. I may have to read this off of here because my computer has frozen.
Okay.
So we'll test my vision.
You want me to increase it?
Oh, no, that's fine. I'll be stubborn. This is R 56 of 2025 to amend the 2025 operating budget to reduce $600,000 in expenses and fund balance usage, and I saw a move.
Second.
All right. Alder Person Butler.
In this one, I have to defer to Nicole Marie.
So the, what's missing from the title is that this is for the expenditure restraint program. We've got it in the agenda listed that way. The expenditure restraint program is a program through the state that kind of restricts how much cities can raise, use their expenditures by, basically, is what it says. So when Dave did the 2025 budget, through his calculations, he had indicated that there needed to be $600,000 of expense and fund balance usage. That's like a just on-paper expense and revenue, so that way we could meet the constraints of the expenditure restraint program. As I was getting ready to file the paperwork, I was like, it came up with a negative number, which said that we were not going to get our expenditure restraint funding, and I was like, hold on, something's not right in this. So we discovered an error in the calculation, and so unfortunately, the cell that he referenced in like the Excel equation just was just the wrong cell, and so it, through his calculation, said that we should use the $600,000. As I revised the calculation, we didn't need the $600,000. So if we do not make this budget amendment, we will end up losing our expenditure restraint payment from the state in 2026, which is about $230,000 of revenue. So we are going to make this budget amendment. It will put everything back in line, and then we'll all live a happy day. So that is the recommendation.
All right, now, I would just add, I mean, it was a good catch, so we appreciate that. And Nicole Marie came to me right away and said, "Well, what should we do?" And we decided between us to call Eller, since they're our financial consultant, and they made the recommendation to make the correction. I think there was a date it had to be made by.
So the expenditure restraint report is due by May 1st, so we need to make this recommendation tonight.
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is offer to purchase a parcel on Main Page Court. And who would like to introduce this one? City Attorney, Matthew, did you want to?
Yeah.
Or Director Abir?
We can tag team it. So there is a very small parcel off of Main Page Court that is approximately 764 square feet. So Public Works is looking to make some improvements to that area to basically increase, I think, the width of that and allow for a turnaround area. So acquiring this property is kind of the first domino in negotiating with other property owners in that area, because there are several small parcels that, I don't know how they were created, but they're very small parcels sort of along that area that we would be looking to acquire. And so this is the first domino of it. We've talked to the landowner that this is acceptable to them. I believe Brett said it's all within budget. The project's already been approved by Public Works.
And if you look at the map, you'll see it's down by the bridge, and I think that you've been down there a few times.
Yeah, so this project has to do with Main Page Court, but also the Jefferson Street Bridge. So the Jefferson Street Bridge, the abutment actually needs to move to the north a little bit, so we've been working with the property owners down in this area that use this area as parking. So the parcel just to the south of the highlighted parcel is owned by the house that's just to the south of the bridge. We've been talking with that property owner. The biggest thing that they don't want to lose is parking. So we are looking to redesign this roadway down here to offer a turnaround, but still maintain parking to those that still have those parcels available to them along the river, while still moving the bridge abutment to the north. Obviously, we can't do any taking because of the bridge, because it is a pedestrian way, but however, we're looking at some roadway improvements and doing a turnaround down there that we will be working with the property owners on. Once we acquire this property, then we have some, basically some leverage or some opportunity to create something down there that offers parking that's needed in that area.
And some of the, like, adjacent parcels are actually owned by other property owners in that area. This one is not. The owner didn't even realize they owned it. So this is, I guess, maybe a pleasant surprise for them.
All right. Anything else you want to add? Is that pretty much it?
Not really, I mean...
Yeah, and I think, you know, the plan is, is to try to make this happen, and then we have to deal with the bridge, right?
Yeah, without going into too much detail, because there could be some negotiations in the future with other parcel owners.
So, okay. So I guess we're looking for a motion. I'll go ahead.
Sure.
So I think what you're saying is this is a step, because I remember when I was on Public Works, that there were still some challenges in getting that bridge fully fixed and/or replaced. So this is a step, but this is not the full solution quite yet, right?
Right, right. This is basically step one in the property acquisition stage that we can create some areas, basically, we have some areas to work with that is controlled by the city versus controlled by, you know, a private party. And again, reminder, we can't do any taking if it's related to the bridge, so this is the first step to kind of create some opportunity that we can offer other parcel owners in that area.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for offer to purchase the parcel.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Oh.
Regina or Lisa, take your pick.
Okay. Second by Alder Person Hirsch.
Somebody, take your pick.
You want to arm wrestle for it? It's not that important to you. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. Okay, next item is discuss possible lease with the Stone Chamber. We did have a conversation at the Finance Committee earlier. Do you want to summarize that, Alder Person Butler?
Yeah, this is a continuation of what was presented at council previously, talking through the chamber wanting to lease space within city council for an initial period of two years. There's ongoing negotiations around that since they are moving out of the depot space. And I can't really summarize all of the conversations that went on in terms of looking at the space. The primary conversations right now are around election time and the need for space and proper, I would say, I guess, traffic through City Hall during those periods. Couple of small changes involving number of keys issued. There was discussion in Finance about the financials, and we had requested that the chamber share their financials, and they're hesitant to do so. And that revolves around the rental amount of $200 a month is the number that we landed on. And the discussions are ongoing, and I think the question is whether we want to continue that. Does that summarize it?
Yeah, I think it does. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, basically, Sarah has been out, so we haven't really had a chance to follow up with her. Once she gets back into town, we'll provide some additional revisions for her. I think tonight, it's just providing an update, and I guess if there's strong opposition to leasing the space in the first place, it'd be good to know now, just so we don't continue down the pathway. But if the council is supportive of continuing to move forward with negotiating a potential lease for the chamber to use City Hall, that's just good to know that we'd be on the right track. But there are some ongoing things, like the rent amount, if any. We're going to work to get at least some, a financial picture, and there are a few other details we have to work out for once Sarah gets back into town.
And I would add that within Finance, there were questions for clarification around a lot of those points, but there were no, there's no strong objection to moving forward.
All right, I have Alder Person Hirsch was first, and then, oh, go ahead. Oh, did she? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Sorry, you can't see me down here?
Just throw something at me.
Hey, I just have a question. What is the corporate structure of the chamber? Are they a nonprofit? Is it an LLC?
I believe that the chamber, well, there's two parts. There's the Chamber of Commerce, and then there's Visitor Services. So the Visitor Services is funded through room tax, basically, and City Attorney can probably give you all sorts of details on that, like he did at the Finance Committee.
Yeah, so the city has a room tax that's 8%. So by statute, at least 70% of all that room tax has to go to a tourism entity to be spent on tourism promotion and development. So they get 70% of the room tax. They might get a bigger percentage based on ordinances, but 100% of those funds have to be spent on tourism promotion and development to generate paid overnight stays in the city. So that's one entity, or like a part of the chamber. The chamber itself, I believe, it's a, I think it's likely a nonprofit on the Wisconsin DFI.
It's a 501(c)(6), maybe?
Yeah, I don't remember the, I don't know exactly what their status is. They are in a corporation with the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions, so they're legally a corporation, but for federal and state tax purposes, I believe they're a nonprofit. So potentially, they would have like statements that we could acquire. Those are generally pretty nondescript, in my experience, but we could potentially request those from the state to get a better sense of at least the documentation they submit.
Yeah, so the chamber, you know, the way they're looking at it is they're trying to position themselves going forward to be in a position where they can pay rent, whether it's to us after a two-year period or another building. And anything that they pay for rent is less resources available for their membership, and they really want to focus as much of their revenue on membership as they can for things that they do in the community, you know, the, you know, centimii and wine walk and, you know, those types of events, as well as educational opportunities. They do luncheon learns, and they do the business buzz, so you can have a chance for, to meet with other people in the community and build those connections. So, you know, I think our cost currently is, for the depot, for the chamber, and Historical Society, is averaged about $8,700 a month, if you go back and look at 10 years' worth. Now, that includes the utilities. Utilities for the depot building was running about $4,000 a year. So there's going to be a cost savings just by selling the building to the city. So, I mean, financially, you know, this isn't really going to do much to move the needle if we do charge them rent. I think initially, we put a couple hundred dollars in there thinking that we might be able to provide internet and phone, but after talking to IT, we're really not going to be able to do that, so they're basically requesting that we remove the rental amount. So I think most of it is kind of highlighted in Sarah's memo, but if you want additional information, you can kind of let us know what that might be, and we'll try to provide that, and hopefully, she'll be able to, well, the next meeting is going to be close to centimii, so she's hoping she doesn't have to attend, but she might be able to maybe zoom in if need be, or provide more information for you all. The Finance Committee hasn't made a recommendation yet. We figured it would probably be back at Finance and Council at the next meeting, hopefully get to a decision point, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, there's a desire to do that. If things were to move forward, they would like to relocate in City Hall sometime in June, and then, you know, we would then focus on the Historical Society and seeing if we can get them relocated sooner than later. If we do, then maybe we can move up the closing date for the schmucks to start working on the building. They're going to potentially do some work ahead of time, and Rick's working on that too, so you'll probably see that maybe at the next meeting, what that might look like. But things are moving forward, and this is kind of one of the pieces to the puzzle for this overall plan to, you know, do that redevelopment down in Arts District down there that I think most of us are pretty excited about. Go ahead.
I guess, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other with respect to rent at this point, because they haven't been paying any rent for Eon, so if they can't even afford $200, it tells me that their financials are not very strong. So I guess I'd be able, but without knowing, we don't know.
Yeah, I would say, you know, from being on the board, generally speaking, their finances are improving. They took a hit during the pandemic, like other organizations, because they couldn't really do a full centimii, and they rely on that money to basically pay for their salaries. And the golf event and some of the other events they had, they just weren't able to hold. But since then, I mean, they're nice, headed in a nice trajectory as far as participation and membership and events that they are having, so I think they're definitely going in the right direction to hopefully financially put themselves in a position moving forward.
The other question I had, it was just a comment that Sarah had made during the last meeting where she talked about they would use the conference room in the basement for business, for businesses to have meetings, is what she said, and that doesn't resonate well with me because it, you know, City Hall has a lot of information there and a lot of, you know, data, and the chamber is applying, using their own liability insurance in case something happens when they're there. If you have another entity using City Hall that isn't really associated with the chamber or City Hall, that just doesn't seem right, and we got away from businesses using cities' conference rooms.
Yeah, and the short answer to that is the CACP Committee's been looking at our building use policy, and currently, our policy would not allow for-profit businesses to use our space to conduct their business. So I've talked to Sarah and really said that that wouldn't really be appropriate according to our current policy. Certainly, the council could change that policy, but that's not what we're talking about tonight, so she understands that wouldn't be an option. She just thought it would be nice to be able to offer that, but it doesn't feel like that's an option. Probably the main thing we're working on at this point is to make... Probably the, the main thing we're working on at this point is to make sure that during the elections, to the point you're making, that we minimize the traffic in those sensitive areas where the ballots are. And I think that, that's something that City Clerk has been communicating and we're doing some reorganizing right now to, to create space and, and provide more secure, not only to the materials, but even access to the building. We've been working on that. We're hoping to have some, some plans for you and potentially pay for some upgrades for security in the building using some of the funds that we received for the sale of the depot. So we are having those conversations. So I think that's a really good point that you make. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? So, I mean, unless there's a strong objection, you'll probably see this back, but if, if you do have a strong objection, I think now might be the time to communicate that so we don't invest any more time or effort in moving forward with it. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so this will be back next month and we'll try to get you some more information. If there's anything specific that you want to know, let me know and I can talk to Sarah when she gets back. And as I mentioned at Finance, she'd be more than happy to meet you individually if you want to have a conversation, you know, specific to the finances, if that's something that you're, you want to learn more about. I'm sure she can, you know, communicate to a point with you on that. I think by policy, board policy, there's only so much she can share without permission, I think is the way she phrased it. So otherwise, we'll move on to the next item and that is the amendment to the Memorandum of MOA. Memorandum, oh, I'm thinking it was an MOU, it's an MOA, Memorandum of Agreement with the Alexander Company. And I'll leave it to the City Attorney to introduce this one.
Yes, so if you recall, I can remember when this, it might have been October, we entered into a MOA with the Alexander Company related to the Riverfront site. So basically, they provided the city with a $25,000 payment to exclusively negotiate with them about acqui, or acquiring that site and developing it. So the original MOA is set to expire April 30th. They have requested an extension until July 31st. I believe this is gone before the RDA and they've recommended approval. So what the amendment does is, I mean, it's fairly straightforward where it would extend the deadline to July 31st for us coming to some sort of agreement on developing the property. And then also requires them to enter into the city's cost reimbursement agreement. One thing I'll highlight for that is typically with developers, we require them to design all the public improvements. Here, the city would be taking on the costs of designing the public improvements. If we do enter into a development agreement with Alexander, they would reimburse us for the cost of design. But the thinking is that if we pay for the designs, we can use them if there's a different developer at some point. So I've talked or emailed with Gary Becker about this and he said that, that's correct, that's the understanding and what his conversations with Alexander have been, because those plans would have value to the city moving forward regardless of the developer. Because I believe the layout, there's, I don't think there's a final layout, but there's working towards consensus on what the public improvements would look like for that site, regardless of who the developer is. So that's just one thing to highlight. So the cost reimbursement agreement itself, it's, it's fairly standard. They would be reimbursed for all the costs related to their zoning approvals and any TIF requests that they make. So they would be providing a $10,000 deposit. So it's slightly less than the standard $15,000 that the city requires for other developers, but they've already provided that $25,000 option payment to the city. So they've put quite a significant stake in already. But we do have the option of going into closed session tonight. We don't have to, so we could, if the council feels comfortable approving as-is, we could, there could be a motion to approve it. If you would like to discuss anything related to the agreement or you feel like a closed session would be required to talk about any changes you'd like to see, we could certainly go into closed session because that is an option.
All right, thank you. Alder Person Hirsch, you're the, are you still the Chair of the RDA?
Yes.
All right, anything you want to add or you think we're ready to move forward?
Yeah, I mean, this is just an extension. Originally, when we did the first MOA, Alexander had come in with the Alexander Corp. and Steve Brown, and they were going to develop the whole site. Well, since then, Steve Brown's group has decided not, that they could not make it financially feasible. And so Alexander has been really trying to find a second developer to develop that site because they're doing the affordable housing part on that. They don't do market rate, so they're trying to find a, a company that will do the market rate apartments on that. And right now, we're working with the mayor and Rick and, was it Ellers and Gary Becker to look at our TID districts to see what we can offer market rate developers to make it cash flow positive as opposed to negative. And so that's just taking more time and, you know, things have changed drastically since October in the world at large, so. Yep, yep, so things have changed. So we don't want to lose Alexander because they're still very excited to build on that site and it'd be really appropriate that we get something there, so.
All right, and then Alder Person, Sherlucky, are you on the RDA now?
I am, and I would second everything Alder Person Hirsch just said. I mean, yeah.
So we can either go into closed session or we can make a motion and open session to do the extension. Do you guys have a preference?
Make a motion, move forward.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alder Johnson? Any?
I just want to bring up, just noticed something, there's a misspelling here. I don't know if this is really going to have any bearing on anything, but on page three, under delivery of notices and request for payment, the developer's first name is misspelled under if to developer, there's a, the letter is just jungle around.
We can fix that. Yeah, script errors there.
Still got it?
Doggone.
All right. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Butler, a second by Sherlucky, Johnson gets shut out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.